Hey.
She wanted to drop her act on your win today.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you guys appreciate it.
Oh, great.
What happened? We have that.
I could see all suits there.
No, good.
That's what I do.
It wasn't the same. Did you get a friend?
Nick. Fit ass. Because the chairman wants you to.
Four o'clock, let's go.
Well, if you sit down, we go.
You don't have to wait till he sits down.
Yeah, I would be careful.
Yeah, really.
Four oh one. Let's get this.
What a team. Good evening. Tonight, we begin the first of our three public hearings on the 2026 operating and capital budgets. We'll hear from the Controller's Office, PRT, and the District Attorney's Office. When we get to the Q and A portion, I'd like the members to please only ask a few questions at a time to give everyone a chance. And we'll come back for additional questions if time permits. We'll begin this evening with individuals who signed up for the public comment. First is English Burton. English Burton is not here. Edward Wren.
Ed's not here.
Edward Wren's not here. Jacob Poole.
Not here.
So much for signing up. First, we will bring up Controller O'Connor and his staff and Mayor Lecter Connor. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, counsel.
It's good to see you again.
Thank you, guys, very much. And I'm with my deputy, Amy Wise, and I will go through our statement here. And I also want to thank, I'll be pointing them out, but my whole controller staff who came with me as well. I would like to talk to you about the mission of the Controller's Office and its obligation to the residents of Allegheny County. We are committed to promoting innovation, transparency, efficiency, and accountability in county government. We record all revenue and expenditures and provide oversight of the county's operations, services, spending, and contracts. By promoting transparency and accountability and building confidence in our government, we work to protect taxpayer dollars and the services on which our residents rely. This year's budget request is $8.8 million for 89 full-time budgeted positions. Although the allocation is below our initial budget request, we believe that this is inappropriate for us to still be able to perform our statutory duties. The services by division, I'll start with our accounting division. The accounting division monitors the financial affairs of the county, processes, and processes more than 300,000 vendor payments annually, setting up all new contracts and processes, all contract amendments and rebudget requests, administrative payroll records, tags at risk, and depreciation, and produces financial reports in a variety of forms. The division produces our annual comprehensive financial report, our popular annual financial report, and our interim report, all of which have been greatly helpful to the public to help them understand the county's current financial position. Each year, the Government Finance Office Association recognizes our ACFA and PAFRA for outstanding achievement in financial reporting. Our payroll section ensures that our entire county workforce gets paid and gets paid on time. As of September, they have processed more than 129,000 payments, representing more than $335 million in total wages. Our construction inspection team reviews all construction of facilities, new construction, and rehabs. As of this fall, there are approximately 30 active construction projects with a budget cost of $125 million. The teams provided oversight to multiple projects in 2025, including the Glenwood Bridge, Kane McKeesport, and bridge and road repairs throughout the capital budget. Our inspectors were able to identify approximately $350,000 in savings, thanks to the oversight that they provide. The accounting division, particularly the accounts payable section, began working with the Department of Human Services to implement a new service to providers to make foster care, family caregivers, and senior care companions debit card payments. This enables them to get paid a lot quicker and to use a new debit card service. The Controller's Office successfully paid all poll workers and constables who worked the March 2025 special election with debit cards. This has reduced the county's cost. It's reduced the amount of hours that our office works on mailing out printed paychecks. And we also demoed it in certain areas throughout the fall general election. Finally, the accounting division will support the Treasurer's Office in its selection and implementation of new banking services as they relate to the J.D. Edwards operations. I would like to recognize Starry, who was very supportive and helpful on the paying of debit cards to our poll workers. Joni, as well as Sarah, is here with us from the accounting division. Our auditing division. The auditing division, our office, ensures that the county is achieving honest, efficient management and full accountability in every aspect of government. This division performs financial audits, performance audits, all completed in accordance with government auditing standards. The auditing division is peer reviewed, a distinction achieved by very few government auditing operations. The auditing division has successfully passed six consecutive peer reviews with no deficiencies. In addition to providing recommendations to the county on how we operate more effectively, the auditing department works, work produces savings for Allegheny County as well. We perform our single audit in-house, which saves roughly $100,000. The auditing division also performs the Health Department's Title V Air Quality Fund Audit in-house, which saves us $10,000. And this year, we did seven hotel audits completed in 2025, found more than $107,000 owed in back taxes to the county. Furthermore, the hotel audits are no longer being contracted out. We have now brought that internally, thanks to our office, as well as a partnership with the Treasurer's Office. I would like to just mention a couple of the audits that we did this year. Our office audited the Office of Public Defenders to determine whether it utilizes best practices to provide effective legal representation to intelligent defense in criminal cases. We also did an audit on the 911 call center. And we just completed an audit on the Department of Human Services to ensure that it is following regulations as well as key internal policies and procedures regarding mental health and drug and alcohol programs. I would like to thank Lori from our audit division, who has been with us for quite some time. We'll leave it at that. Yeah. And last, or not last, the management system. So this is the J.D. Edwards Division from our office. The Division of Management Systems is responsible for maintaining financial management software while supporting the Controller's enterprise contact management functions. This division operates J.D. Edwards Services. It's over at the City-County Building. Last year, the call center received about 3,000 calls to the help desk. The JDE Service Center played an integral role in the work with the Department of Human Services to implement the foster care, family, and family caregiver and senior care companion debit card payments. We also have gone online with our paychecks, which has saved a lot of money for our taxpayers, but also has made it a lot easier for county employees to see their pay stubs online. Earlier this year, the retirement office requested identification of retroactive payments to the pay period during which wages were earned for calculations of retirement benefits, a change that our office was able to make. As part of ongoing cost savings and efficiency measurements, we have implemented by the JDE Service Center payroll checks being printed and saving us money online. I would like to recognize Sean and Mario from that division. And last, the administration. The Division of Administration houses staff dedicated to policy, budget analysts, special project managers, community relations, internal government affairs, legal counsel, communications, external relations, human resources, and executive management. In addition to supporting the other divisions' ongoing efforts, the staff of the Division of Administration works to further the goals and missions of the Controller's Office and the county by being the financial watchdog for the taxpayers. I'd like to recognize Amy. Bill Urbannick is here as well, and my chief of staff, Matt Singer. And I would like to recognize Encore, who's from that division as well. So I would open it up to questions.
Thank you, Controller O'Connor. I'd like to make a note that Suzanne Filiagi is now on the phone also. I'm going to go to my left and start with Councilman Walton. You have any questions?
No questions. Good buddy. Minimal language, improved performance. We need that kind of leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Constable woman, hello.
Hi, I just have one question. I know we're going to be hearing from the District Attorney's Office lately, so I was wondering. I know there hasn't been a District Attorney's Office audit done in quite some time, but I was wondering if that's anything that's on the plans for you guys for the rest of the year.
Yeah, we can definitely talk about doing that.
I would love to.
Okay, yeah, we could.
Who did the financial audit? It will be getting released here.
Oh, sorry. No, we did do that, yeah.
Twenty-four and 2020.
But I think you want specifics.
I want a little more than that, but that would be a great place to start.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just signed those papers today, but I think you want a different type of audit, right?
Sure, I'd like the whole shebang, but yeah, that would be awesome.
We can discuss that.
Twenty twenty-four and 2023 financial.
Yeah, that and who else? The Sheriff's Office as well today, yeah.
And the police.
So those are annual.
For both 2024 and 2023, for all of those?
Yes. The police will not be out for a couple of weeks. And we issued the share.
Yeah, we just signed that an hour ago, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
No more questions?
Not for me.
That's hard to believe. Councilman Bottom.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Controller O'Connor, for being here. And by the way, congratulations, Mayor Lect, O'Connor.
Thank you.
I just have one question, and I apologize if it was addressed before I came in, but I'm noticing that the number of budgeted personnel in the department is going from 94 to 89 between in the, oh, sorry, wait, this is the. Okay.
That's right. You're right.
No, you're correct.
You're right.
Yeah, it went down.
You're right.
Okay, is that just sort of merging together different?
Yeah, it's doing that, and we've also done a lot of work in getting people furthering their education so that they can fill multiple positions at once, which I think is very helpful. I mean, Amy's been with us for a long time as the deputy, and Starry stepped up her role as well. So I think, you know, continuous education has really helped us fill a lot of those holes so that we didn't have to come back to you guys and ask for more positions.
Sounds like an efficiency thing, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Constable Azie.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you all for being here. I think the budget is appropriate. I'm sorry. And I also say that you're going to be doing more with less. And I think that's what we call efficiencies of scale. My concerns, and I don't know how deep you get into the Kane Hospital situation. People have been let go, and I think Ray, and that's what she likes to be called, is doing a great job. However, there are some real problems within the Canes. And it has to do with crumbling walls at McKeesport. Infrastructure is decaying. Some of the plumbing has let loose. Plumbing had filled the Hazelwood basement. And instead of bringing in contractors that are qualified or certified, which I think is appropriate, people that were working there, guards and others, were asked to clean it up without the proper safety equipment. Now, like I said, I don't know how much control you have in that area. I do know that it's been published that there's going to be around $9 million put into the Canes, which I think is a very, a very good idea. And that's just one of my concerns. The other concern is, I'm rather parochial. And when we reach out to contractors for various work, whether it's infrastructure, roads, bridges, building, whatever, supplies, do you have, or does anybody in your staff have a handle on those contractors or vendors in this region that are local? Now, some contractors, engineering firms, will say, hey, we're here. We have an office here. But their main office is in Chicago or some other part of the country. And I just believe that we live here, we work here, we spend our money here. And I believe that I think would very help, it would help our economy quite well if we used our own people that are qualified. That's all I have to say, and thank you for, like I said.
Yeah, no, I.
And congratulations.
No, thank you. I would just follow up that we, as I mentioned, our construction division does do inspections. I think, you know, making sure that things are local is what we have to do. But that comes, obviously, the RFP and the bids and things like that. But we do do the inspections on sites. And I think we've found a lot of issues, and we make them go back and fix it. And I think that's the one benefit that everybody forgets that we have internally in our office. So if the cement's supposed to be poured three feet and they only pour two feet, well, we're making you go out and pay to fix it, not the taxpayer. So I think that's the one benefit that we have in this office that we don't talk enough about.
Well, it's nice that your office has your eyes and ears to the ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Constable Grisbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Controller O'Connor. Only question I have is, you spoke that you didn't quite get everything that you requested in this year's budget. Looks like $140,000 discrepancy. What would you have used with that $140,000? What are you not getting?
I mean, I think there were some technology things we possibly could have added, but nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. And I think if we have to cut back, and again, there were a couple of positions in there that we would, could have had, but now that internally we look at our staff and staff that's willing to work and go the extra mile saves us all money. So if we can cut those savings back, we'll definitely do that.
Okay, and those were open positions, then?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Constable Futeolis.
Not necessarily a question, but congratulations on being able to keep your budget the same and find efficiencies. It would be great if all the departments could follow your role model there, because $36,000, that's it. But that includes increases in salaries, I assume.
Yeah.
Great. Who's got to complain about that, right? I love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Constable Nakray Chakas.
Thank you.
Constable Filiagi.
Thank you very much, Chairman Palmasina. I appreciate the opportunity to hear the presentation from the Controller. Thank you very much, Corey. We appreciate your efforts at efficiency. I did also want to point out that I was particularly interested in your information about the decrease in contracted services. It was your office, in fact, your staff, who went over some details with myself and Councilwoman DeMarco last year and brought to our attention the use of contracted services throughout the county and what it was doing to our pension plan. So if I would here say this, that you're, you know, talking the talk and walking the walk because you, if I heard correctly, you're decreasing those contracted services, some of the ones that you have control of yourself, correct?
Correct. I think what we talked about, and it was brought up when you look at Kane, and I know that the executive has looked at this, and there's a lot of contracted employees that if we could look at bringing them in-house, they would, they would help to pay into our pension. And I think there's, there's a number of those things that I know that the executive has looked at, and we've looked at it as well, especially with Kane always having a loss of revenue each and every year. If there's a way to bring some of those nurses and other departments, not just there, but that's one that comes to the top of our head, that's always been discussed, about bringing individuals into the county to help on a number of different levels. That goes a very long way in helping all of us.
Yes, so I thank you for your attention to that. And I just, that's the comment I wanted to make, and it's a great, it looks like a very good budget. So thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Suzanne. Controller O'Connor, Mayor-elect O'Connor, I wish you nothing but luck. Very signed budget. Like Nick said, hopefully the rest of the departments are the same way, but we wish you nothing but luck. You and your staff have done a great job.
No, thank you, guys, and thanks for the honor of serving and working with you all over the last few years. I really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
We'll be helping you across the street, too.
Yeah, I'm sure you can find me. Thank you.
You guys have a great night.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
I mean, I heard it on the phone last week, it was like minus 1.8%.
[inaudible]
Becky Spangler, come on down.
What do I win?
Becky, Spangler, come on down.
Becky Spangler, come on down.
What do I win?
It's good to see you.
I'm supposed to get two, and that was a time I couldn't.
But the thing is, I lost weight, and I feel great.
Well, I'm on schedule for next week.
Well, I gotta do a hip hop here and a half to go to the [inaudible].
Well, my husband's having a [inaudible].
And they do the outpatient.
Yeah, there's a doctor.
Oh, [inaudible].
So next, we're going to go with the DA's office, and presentation is going to be.
No.
Becky Spangler, welcome.
Unknown participant is now joining.
People usually don't want me to have a microphone, because they say I'm a loud talker to begin with. Okay, we ready? Okay, I just have a few notes here, because I did use to be an appellate attorney. You know, here we are yet again, you know, the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over and getting the same result, but I'm here. You know, as we've noted in years past, we remain, in our view, chronically understaffed. We don't, we don't have enough attorneys or enough support staff to really adequately address the cases that come into the office. Currently, we're on track this year to have filed 10,000 additional criminal informations, which is the final charging document. And, you know, things don't slow down in our office. We have, because of our understaffing, that puts a lot of burden on the people who are here, which causes a lot of stress and anxiety and extra hours that they work, and also results in a constant churn of people leaving for more money, less stress, better work-life balance. Takes a significant amount of time to train new people. We have a rigorous interview process. We try to interview people, and, you know, we're, we, we look for a high-quality individual. We go through a committee of hiring. We train these people, and then we lose them after about five to eight years. We currently have two people who will be going, leaving our office when the federal government opens back up, because, silly them, they have offers from the feds, and even with this current budget impasse, they still want to go there when they open back up. So by the end of the month, we'll lose two individuals. We have, we have interviews of attorneys. We had a really good turnout at the most recent job fair at Duquesne. We were surprised, we had people lined up, you know, multiple, to talk to our folks. So we do the recruiting, we just have a hard time retaining people after they get that five years and then beyond, which always, you know, it's nice to have senior people on staff. It's also because we have a lot of new people and empty, empty positions, it takes longer to dispose of cases, for cases to be filed, for the information, for discovery to be reviewed and provided to defense counsel. That results in delays. Now, we've cut those down significantly. We are now, our pre-trial discovery, it's trial discovery, you know, discovery is the information we're required to provide the defendant from, before trial, any evidence and reports that we gather. So we're, we're getting more and more of that with all the video evidence, with all the cameras, dash cams, body cams, surveillance cameras. It's exhausting. It's good, because for us, it helps us make sure that we are charging the right person in our viewpoint, but we have to go through all of that and make the necessary redactions. When you have to constantly be training people to go through and how to do that and then review it, it does delay that process. So we, one case can result in, if it's a complicated case, say, guns and drugs cases, where you have a lot of video, you have a lot of body cam, you could have up to 100 hours of video that has to be viewed by our discovery staff, who go through and make what they believe are the proper redactions. And then the attorney on the case actually has to go back and review that, too, because they have to make sure that everything that should be redacted has been, and that something hasn't been taken out unnecessarily, that the defense is entitled to see. So that causes delays, which causes delays in disposition of the case. And if, if the defendant is incarcerated, it results in somebody being in jail longer than they should, which someone should not be in jail longer than they should be, and it's also a cost to the county. I think the most recent number I've heard is it's $95 a day, I think, to, a little more than that? Okay, that was the latest number I'd heard. So, I mean, other than the injustice that's being incurred, there's also the cost to the county. So if you want to save money, if we have more people to go through this stuff and process the cases faster, then that will reduce not just the cost to the county, but somebody being in jail longer than they should be. Let's see. One of the things we now are doing is we are, we do have people who attend the bail motion hearings, and that means that we're there if something can be worked out, that it can be handled that day of. We weren't always there before, but we try to attend all the bail motion hearings and have, have people available for those in the courthouse. We do not have people available to appear at preliminary arraignments when the defense, when the initial bail is set, the off-hours. During the day, we can have people there, but after hours, we don't have the staff to do that. And we don't have the staff to be, to appear at all the, at all the preliminary arraignments during work hours, but we try to have people there for more serious cases where there is likely to be a request for bail. We, currently, there's about 25,000 to 30,000 cases filed in the Magisterial District Judge, Justice Offices per year. About 20,000 of those are disposed of, and so I would say we're going to have about 10,000, we're projecting this year, at the end of the year, based on the numbers we're at now. We'll have approximately 10,000 new cases come into us from the MDJ office. And if we don't have enough personnel to send to Magisterial District Justice Offices, that means additional cases will come in. And I say that because we presented a budget, we were requesting additional personnel. We always know we're not going to get what we request, but we make the requests that we believe that we need. The county has suggested cutting for personnel from our budget, from our current list. If we cut personnel, it's going to be hard for us to provide people to appear at all the offices that we send them to now, especially since with the current election, we have net three additional judges that will be added to the Court of Common Pleas Criminal Division. So we'll have four additional judge, well, one, one is here currently and is now permanent, but three additional net judges, and we're supposed to operate with four less attorneys. Last time I checked, laws of physics haven't changed. One person can only be in one place at one time. So it will make it difficult for us to have attorneys covering all the cases in every courtroom in a timely fashion. So some judges are going to, we just won't have somebody there at the time they want them to be there. We don't want to do that. We have supervisors who fill in with that, but there are always cases that have to be covered. And with an increase in judges, I just think it's not, you just can't expect us to operate with fewer attorneys in those, in that instance. I know the reasoning that they cut the four positions because we had four positions that we hadn't filled this year, but that was because of the constant churn with people leaving, and we'd hire people and then people would leave. So we're trying very hard to be able to get to that and having a full staff, but it's difficult. And one of the biggest reasons that we're given for why people leave, it's twofold, money and work, overburdened works, caseloads. Our attorneys, the homicide attorneys and the, the violent crimes attorneys carry approximately 40 cases at a time on their, their case schedule. That doesn't sound like a lot, but when you think about all the things that they have to do with that, those are the cases that are in the courthouse that they're carrying. They have to be prepared for those, they have to do discovery on them, they have to provide, they have to meet with witnesses, victims, police officers. That's all before they go into a courtroom. That's all the prep to get into a courtroom. And they're not only doing that, they have pre-trial responsibilities as well. They're all, they all are on call because they're on these, they have these higher, higher level of intensity cases. They're on call 24/7. When you're on call, you get a call from a detective at, well, somebody just got one at 2:30 a.m. last night, because I got the email. So.
[inaudible]. Oh, I'm going to go wrap up a little.
Okay. But so when people have to do that, and they're constantly being called at home, and they're not getting any, there's no overtime, we, you know, we're salaried workers, that, that does add to their burden and their stress level, and people would like to have a life. But if that's part of the caseload, overburdened caseloads, they're working about, on average, depending on the time of year, 50 to 60 hours a week. And I, you know, we can, like I say, I get, I get the emails when they're giving me the case summary of what they just got calls on. We have, we have needs for personnel to be able to monitor our, our caseloads. We have, we have been fortunate enough to receive, to receive grants to get the digital evidence software to do the redactions, and that has been, has been a huge help. That grant has expired, and now we are, the county is funding that. But we don't yet have, one of the things we were requesting was a digital evidence coordinator, someone who, that is the only job they would do, is to be on the police department, seeking to get that information in more quickly, making sure that we have it, and making sure that the staff who are assigned it are handling those cases and getting them out quickly and on time. But, you know, we're not budgeted to receive that position, so we have other staff people in addition to their other jobs. They do that as well. They try to manage that in addition. Let's see, I'm jumping around here, but you guys have all heard me say this before. It's not, there's not much new that I'm saying, but it's just, it hasn't changed, it's just increased. The burdens that we have, I mean, it's wonderful that we have this objective evidence, that we have this, this digital evidence, that we have the recordings. The problem, if it's a problem, is that there's so much of it, and our, our staffing requirements haven't, our staffing levels haven't increased with the levels of video evidence that we're, we're receiving. So that's our biggest problem. I addressed the additional judges. It's, that's, it's pretty much the same issues I've brought to you before. You have our, our packet. I have the county's comprehensive fiscal plan, and I will try to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. We'll go to my left again. Is Whitton here?
I have some questions. I'll take his, too. All right?
No, 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 you won't.
Okay, hi. So I do have, I've been thinking a lot about this lately, so I do have some questions. My first question is, there was an article in the news, I think it was like last week, a week and a half ago, about a settlement that the county had to pay for a malicious prosecution case that was filed by the district attorney in the 2016 Wilkinsburg shooting. And I was just wondering if you guys keep track of that number of, like, settlements that are paid or just costs in general for malicious prosecution suits, and are doing anything to curb those costs?
Well, I don't believe we were a party to that. I believe it was, the suit was against the county.
Right, because of the prosecution by the district attorney's office of the county. Right, because of the prosecution by the district attorney's office of the county.
Well, I, I, I mean, I don't handle those things, but I don't believe that we were found to be liable in that. It was a, it was a, it was a settlement we weren't a part of.
Okay, it was a settlement that the county reached as a result of a malicious prosecution claim for $425,000.
Okay, I, again, I'm going to say we were not a part of that settlement.
Who are you alleging the prosecution was done by?
No, I'm not saying of the settlement. We didn't, we weren't, we didn't negotiate that settlement.
You didn't negotiate the settlement, is what you're saying? So is the answer-
Right, we were not a party to that negotiation.
Is the answer that you guys don't keep track of that sort of cost?
Hold on, she does not know the answers. It's okay.
Yeah, but that wasn't the question. The question was just, do they keep track of those costs?
That's fine, yeah. They probably keep track, and if there's information, you can provide us.
Well, if we're not, if we're not a party to the negotiation, we don't keep track of it.
Okay, um, I will, I will move on. You're, that's like a solicitor's office question you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay, I will do that, okay. So I, I noticed like the, the prosecution costs of especially like low-level offenses are going up when we're seeing crime overwhelmingly, including violent crime, going down? So I was just wondering if you could speak to the reason for those costs.
I will, I will take issue with that, because we're not seeing overwhelmingly going down. Our caseloads are not going down.
Okay, violent crime, incidents of violent crime are going down, incidents of crime in general going down, but the costs of these low-level, and I'm talking like low-level crimes, not violent crimes, those costs are going up in your budget.
Well, I don't know what you consider low-level.
I would consider not violent crimes, low-level crimes, so-
Do you consider a DUI a low-level crime?
Um, yeah.
Okay, the, the reason the cost of prosecution on a DUI would go up is because we have body cam, dash cam, pole cams, every camera that has recorded that event, we have to obtain that, that footage, we have to review it, we have to submit it to the defense.
Okay, um, but what about, I mean, like summaries, low-level misdemeanors, non-DUIs?
Well, a DUI is a low-level misdemeanor.
Right.
That's why I ask if you consider-
I do, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I answered on the, the DUIs, I can tell, I can't tell you why the cost of a summary retail theft, we don't appear on some-
Perfect example.
We don't appear on summary cases. If the only charge is a summary, the DA's office doesn't prosecute that. It's only handled by the police department.
Okay, and then what about, do you guys participate in GAG Non-1 and GAG Non-2 hearings?
We don't participate in GAG Non-1 hearings. We do have somebody on violent crime, GAG Non-2s.
Okay, only the violent ones, okay. So is, can you speak to anything? We've been hearing a lot lately, both in the news and also in presentations to us, about the rising costs in the jail, and that's due to the jail population. And so I'm just wondering if your office has any plans to, or any metrics that you're using to try to bring the jail population down?
Well, that would be earlier disposition of cases.
Okay.
So if we had earlier disposition of cases, people could be, if they're in jail, they could be released earlier. Our plans have always been, we try to review the cases as soon as possible in the system, and we, we do have a certain amount of personnel to work after-hours warrant offices-
I hate to say that.
For the departments where, that are certified and have to seek our approval to file charges, but we only have enough personnel to do certain areas. We don't require approval for all departments. But that is one of our, our goals, and over the years, we have increased the number of departments that we do, that are certified and are required-
Okay.
To get our approval. But because that, when we do that, if we're reviewing the cases at the first instance, when the officer's submitting them into the case, the court case management system, if we have to approve it, we can determine, is this really a felony level that would require an arrest warrant, or should it really be a misdemeanor? And in those instances, that is one way that we have, and we, we've been successful in this in certain jurisdictions, we can reduce the number of felony charges because our DA can review that and say that it really doesn't rise to the felony, it doesn't have that extra element-
Element.
Element that would make it rise to the level of, of a felony. We also support early diversion cases. We're working with Judge Lozera and her mental health court, or competency, the competency court that she's currently working with. We have two DAs assigned to that. So, you know, we're working with the courts in that, where any time that we can divert someone from having to stay in jail, we support that, as long as they're not a danger to the community.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation on that.
Councilman, that's three. Let me go around here first, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, I just have one more. You want me to wait? I'll wait.
I promise you, one more, then one more.
It's like a one and a half, but yes, I promise, I only have one and a half.
No, no, we'll come back to you, no.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, you're aggravating me. Councilman, water.
Thank you, Chair Palmasina, and thank you for being here. So I'm a little bit new, so I just have a couple of questions, just for clarification's sake.
Absolutely. I'm not new, I've been here 30.
So, I was, I was looking at the report, and you mentioned the NICE software.
Mm-hmm. That's the digital evidence software.
Okay, sounds good. So I noticed on page six that it went from 300,00, a little over $300,000 to $350,000 between 2025 and 2026. Is that because of the licensing is increasing, or?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a countrywide issue, that NICE software is just increasing their prices?
Right.
Okay, thank you. And I was going to say, NICE is approximately 35% of the IT budget, but I was not able to see anything regarding cybersecurity in the IT request. So is cybersecurity listed in a separate part of the requested budget, or?
Well, the, our cybersecurity is provided by a company called All Lines.
Could you spell that, please?
All, A-L-L, lines, L-I-N-E-S.
Okay.
And I don't know, I, I'm, I'm not the, I'm not the guru of the numbers.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm an attorney, because I can't do numbers.
No worries.
So, I mean, I don't know where that is, I don't know where that is in this, this presentation. I, I will be honest, I didn't focus on the IT part of the budget.
Sure, no, I, I chair the IT and Process Improvement Committee, so I, I'm just-
Excellent.
That's how my brain is working. Because I had heard in separate conversations that because of, was there a cybersecurity leak from the DA's office?
Yeah, we had a hack last year.
Yeah.
And it was, it was a significant inconvenience, to say the least. And we, we increased through All Lines our cybersecurity. We separated ourselves, we're no longer, we used to share IT resources through the courts and the county, and because of this, we had to separate ourselves out, so we now have a separate server, separate data lines, all of that stuff had to go into that. So we had to do all of those things, had to harden our, you know, all of our systems. And, like I say, I don't, I don't know, Patty, if you can speak to the additional cybersecurity costs, but that is, we did have, we didn't have a completely separate entity doing that, and we do now.
Okay.
We, we were relying on, on, you know, sharing resources with the county and, and the courts, and, you know, that was not, that didn't work out.
Yeah. No worries.
And not, not their fault, you know, everybody's, you know, the U.S. Attorney's Office, I'm not sure if they're back online yet or not, but they were hacked.
Well, I was gonna say, if the-
I'm sorry, not the U.S., the AG's office, the Attorney General's office.
Sure.
So, yeah, because I was trying to send emails to people, and they weren't going through.
Well, I was gonna say-
And they couldn't call me from their phones, they had to, they had to use their personal cell.
Sure, as with every cybersecurity attack. I know the PRT is here, and I know that they had a cybersecurity incident as well, so if we can get the Controller's Office to have a cybersecurity incident, we'll be three for three.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Well, we don't want that.
Yeah, we don't want that.
We don't want that.
Okay, well, that, that answers my question, but my, my second question is regarding the numbers for employees and assistant district attorneys. So looking at Allegheny County and Philadelphia County, they seem to be fairly similar in population, 1.3 million people to 1.6 million people.
Yep.
They almost have the same number of reported crimes, 41,000 versus 42,000, and yet, our employee count is 270, whereas theirs is 600, and our assistant DAs are 112, whereas theirs are 300. Do you think that by adding employees to the department, that we could improve efficiency?
Absolutely. I mean, that's, we, with the use of NICE, the NICE software and the new case filing system, relatively new, that's finally on board, it's PM, well, it's actually called PMS Prosecutor Management System. Some people in our office, this gender, don't like PMS, so we call it PMA.
Oh.
But, the, that, with those two systems, we're able to process and file our criminal informations, which is that final charging document that, that a defendant gets and goes to court. They receive that on what's called the formal arraignment date. So that's after the preliminary hearing, the paperwork comes in, and we have a certain amount of days to get everything, all of our evidence that we can, by that time, gathered, file the final, you know, put together the final filing document, the criminal information, and we have to submit that to the court at the formal arraignment date. Our office has made it our goal to provide what is called preliminary discovery, and have, have that ready for the defendant on the date of the, of the formal arraignment. When we first started trying to do that, we were down around, being able to do that around 50% of the time. We're now up to having that initial discovery packet ready for the defense on the, the formal arraignment date, we're around 85%. We'd like to get that to between 90 to 95%, and I say that realistically because there are certain pieces of evidence that we're, we're going to have to wait for, and we're not going to be able to have that available for the formal arraignment date. We may be able to file the information, but we're not going to have that final report. And that, that can be things like, we're waiting for a forensic report. Any cases that we have from the state police are required, they're required to be sent through, through the state police crime lab in Greensburg. They have a really long backlog, so we know that we're not going to have that final drug test. You know, we'll have the preliminary, so we're pretty sure that this is what it is, we'll file the charge, but we're not going to have that crime lab report. And if, if it comes back as it's something else, or it's negative, even though their preliminary test says that this is, you know, cocaine, and it comes back, there was only a trace, and it, or it's just baby powder, say, that's oftentimes one of the things they use as a, you know, cutting agent, and so there wasn't any actual cocaine in that, in the sample we have, then we'd withdraw those charges. But we're not going to have everything by the time, because the time from the preliminary hearing to the formal arraignment, I believe, is currently about six weeks. And so we have to have all this stuff together and have it filed. We can file the document, but we want to try and have as much of the evidence available to the defense at that time, what we know about.
Sure.
We're always going to have supplementary evidence after that formal arraignment date, because we're going to find additional things. New things come up, we find out something, we have to turn it over. We can't say, oh, we had that date, you don't get anything more. We have an ongoing requirement to provide discovery throughout the, throughout the case.
Sure, and pardon me if, if you're not aware of this information, but that six-week time period, how does that compare to Philadelphia County?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I, I don't know what their, their court, that's a court rule, it's an individual court rule, Allegheny County courts set when our formal arraignment is.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilman Macy.
Thank you, Chairman Palmasina.
Thank you, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for-
I could speak loudly.
I got you.
I can hear you, and I have hearing aids, one each.
And thank you for 30 years of service. You've, I've learned a lot, you've given a lot of information from a lot of the questions some of the people have, and my only concern is, you know, we have rules.
Yeah.
Laws. Apparently, they're only for honest people, okay? And we have protection from abuse, we have restraining orders, people are left out on nominal bond, people are left out on their own reconnaissance, and, and yet, these people end up committing a worse crime. And I, I don't know what you can attribute that to, except that these people may be suffering from mental illness, and they just get enraged, enraged. And I, I don't want to see more and more people just put in jail for nominal situations. But I think the DA's doing a good job with what you have, and if there's anything I can do in the next month and a half, I'm still here.
Oh, are you retiring?
Oh, no, I just didn't run again, I just made a choice.
Well, that's a retirement, yeah.
I know, I know, everybody's-
He hates that word.
I-
No, 'cause I'm not leaving, I'm still here.
Yeah, I, well, yeah, I will miss you.
Aw, thank you.
No, I mean, I, I love coming here and talking. I, I love coming and talking to you all. You can tell I'm a talker. You guys can't get me to shut up.
Well, you're very informative, and I appreciate the facts, because if you don't know, you don't know.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, well, I understand your concerns about people, the, the possibility of a revolving door, that's, it's unfortunate, you just can't predict human behavior. And I, I will say that I believe that our courts' pre-trial services and their behavioral assessment units and such do the best job that you could possibly do in trying to, to look at past behavior, everything that they can gather, and present that to the court, whether it's the MDJ or a Court of Common Pleas judge, and for that judge to make it an informed decision on whether or not to provide bail, and if they're going to provide bail, the type. I, you know, I may disagree with the bail determination of a particular judge-
Mm-hmm.
But I'm not going to second guess or, or, you know, criticize him or her or they for making that decision, because I'm not sitting in that chair. My, my job is to be an advocate, and I, I think we sometimes don't realize how difficult it is, and, and these judges actually do give thought to the bail that they impose, it just sometimes results in, in bad, you know, something bad happens afterwards, and I would, I'm not going to blame a particular judge who may provide bail and somebody then goes out and does something. We may all say, and I don't see this happening that often. We file bail review request forms when we see someone who was on bail for whatever type of bail for a domestic violence case, and then they get a second case, and they get bail again. And they get that third case, we're going to file a bail review request form and request no bond, because, and they haven't been convicted yet, but the same person has been assaulted the same time by this alleged perpetrator. And in those cases, we're going to make an argument. And that's why we have, we have assigned people in the staff that we have, in addition to what they do. We have two senior attorneys, that that's what they do, and they, they bring in younger attorneys when they can, but they do that. We do try to review that, but it's, you know, until I'm sitting in that judge's seat, I'm going to, I, I don't want to be, I mean, I can disagree with it, but, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Councilman Grisbeck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Ms. Bangler, for being here. Kind of piggybacking off of the discussion about bail, you all will make recommendations in regards to bail, is that correct?
We may, we will, we do not ever make a recommendation regarding money. We don't make cash bail recommendations. In fact, our, we, our office was one of the ones early on who fought to get that changed. We actually- We actually got the rules changed for misdemeanor two and misdemeanor threes that you don't get unless you have another charge. They're not, it's inappropriate to impose money bond unless they know they're a known, a known flight to risk, they don't have an address here, they're not from, and things like that. So we're not a big proponent of cash bail, but we do, we will seek no bail because you're a danger to the community, or consulting with pretrial services and others. We will go along with house arrest, with electronic monitoring, no contact orders, that type of thing. But those are the kinds of recommendations we will make. We don't know anything about a person's financial situation. We don't feel we're equipped to make that recommendation.
Understood. I appreciate that. Also, very much appreciate kind of the effort that it seems like you are making to, you know, get involved as early as possible in arraignment. So you're limiting, and just in moving the case along as quickly as possible, so that you're limiting the amount of time that people are spending in jail if they don't need to be there, right? Because as Councilwoman Hallam pointed out, the jail is one of our biggest drivers of costs, and if we can do anything to decrease the jail cost, obviously, there's a higher potential of directing more money to the public defender's office, the DA's office, and obviously, that's a bit of a feedback loop, right?
Right.
As people are able to receive faster and faster services, they'll be able to have their cases heard faster, and then, right? It just kind of feeds on itself. Then, I was looking through your numbers, it looks like you requested about $3 million more than you received. Does that sound about right, $3.2 million more?
I think that's about right.
Okay. And that would have gone entirely to hiring more people for the DA's office to hear these cases?
It, there's, I think 80% of our costs, 80% of that is personnel.
It's personnel, but also, as we increase our personnel, then we have to look at our licensing fees that go up.
Sure.
Because we have to pay for that. IT costs in general tend to go up roughly maybe eight to 10% a year across the board.
Right.
So, yeah, that will also play into our costs.
Okay.
And when we hire new people, we add to our, we do buy laptops that they transport from the courthouse to home. That's how they're able to work from home. So they, when she's talking licensing, it's not just the Microsoft packages or things like that, that we also have to have a secure VPN on the device and those types of things.
Makes sense. So you spoke about attrition a good bit. What is your yearly attrition rate?
Pardon?
What is your yearly attrition rate?
I don't have a yearly attrition rate. I don't know that we keep that. I just, I, we don't see, that's another thing. We don't have a staff that, I would love to be able to come in here and give you all the numbers that some of these departments come, because they have a separate IT staff that does all that. We have two IT people whose job it is, is to keep our systems running. We don't have a data collection division in our office. It's us. It's people like me, keep, you know, doing what I can with numbers. Patty does a great job on the financial side. Heather Pellegrini takes care of a lot of our numbers on the personnel side. But in terms of, you know, having those types of numbers, our attrition rate, honestly, we don't, we have never done that. We just know that we lose people all the time. We don't keep a percentage.
Okay. My personal recommendation would be to do so. Attrition rate is an extremely simple calculation.
Yeah. You're going to give me somebody to do that?
I would happily do it for you. If you give me the number of employees who left this year and your average number of employees, you divide those two numbers and you multiply by 100. It's that simple, and that's all there is to it. I think it's just tough to make a statement on our attrition rate is high without knowing what our attrition rate is, right? I mean, all employers have attrition to a certain degree. People are always coming and going from different employers, and without understanding what a particular attrition rate is, it's really difficult to make the statement that the attrition rate is high. I'm sure you're probably right, right? Like, but I'm an engineer, I look at data, that's how I make decisions. And if I don't even have a number to go off of, I would, I would never make an assertion that a number is high without actually having a tangible number.
Okay. Well, I can try to create that number and get that to you as a post-hearing submission.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you very much.
No, I appreciate that.
Councilman Few Torres.
Well, heck, sounds like he can do it.
Yeah, right.
He already did, just now.
Yeah.
I think he got a new job. Well, I'll apologize, because I don't believe this is a budgetary question, it really isn't. It's more of a personal question. It's okay. It'll be good. It's good, don't worry. Now, I represent the northern part of Allegheny County, toward the AK Valley. Early on this year, I had a request to the district attorney's office. I requested them to go after the Pittsburgh mills, if you recall. They did, and they did a great job. I want to thank you personally for what you did to help them, to help the county, the district.
And we appreciate whenever we get any information from anyone in public when there's an issue. You know, we're not out there just patrolling the streets looking for things.
Yeah.
But when we get, you know, we got the case with, and I can only, it's still ongoing, but we have the Monview Heights case that's currently pending. That was people in the community coming to us and saying, we believe this bad thing is happening. That's why we have an investigations unit. And we're always happy to receive those requests.
Yeah, Fraser Township was just, besides himself, you know, going after the owner of the mills, and they just couldn't get anything done until the district attorney stepped in and actually made a big case out of it. It was very popular here in, as far as, in the news, as far as that. And like I said, you thank Steve and your staff for what you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Councilwoman Necarag Jackus.
Thank you, Chair. So I too was going to ask about, well, I was going to call it the retention rate. Positive spin on it.
Well, you all get, you all get that information.
I would also encourage you to work with their personnel to get that number. My question, I have two questions. My first question is, in this budget, so I'm public safety chair, and I get a lot of requests from municipalities, the police departments in particular, asking about grant sources and funding for the license plate readers. And I understand that you all are going through a new process, new software and such. So can you talk a little bit about what funding, if any, would be available to police departments for the new software that will be, that you'll switch over to in the coming year?
Well, most of the funding for the license, when we do grants to the individual municipalities, when we put up the cameras, those come from forfeiture funds. So when we have those, and we're, it's not a, like a steady stream that comes from, that we don't have a grant or something from that. We have, you know, we have to have the funds that come in to our, to our office to be able to hang additional cameras. I know our goal is to provide those to every municipality who would want, who would like to have that coverage. What we're trying to do and have tried to make, you know, the priority are those thoroughfares that go from county line to county line and across the state where we know that drug trafficking is occurring. And, because that's, to use drug forfeiture money, it has to be used for narcotics and addiction purposes. So we try to be very careful, but that's where most of that money comes from, and we have to have the funds. I don't know what our forfeiture fund is now. We have a different, we have separate people who handle the forfeiture stuff to try and keep that out of the trial level thing, so that's a separate issue. But those--
Would we be able to understand, then, the priority areas that you, have you already identified those?
Well, any, like--
So as an example--
Coming from the turnpike, getting off in Monroeville and down through there, through that Monroeville area, I think, I believe Route 30--
Tri-Borough Expressway?
I, is that, is that the Route 30 area?
No.
Okay. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not originally from Allegheny County. I've been here over 30 years, but I don't, I don't have a little narrow area. So Tri-Borough Expressway is--
Westmoreland into Albee County.
Yes. That is, okay, that's one of them, from Westmoreland County. We're also trying to do stuff like with Butler County, I could say, from Cranberry down through that way. And we don't have, I don't believe Beaver County, that we have anything with them, because that's, we're trying to get those thoroughfares where people are coming from somewhere else and moving through, and then, you know, where they're trafficking within the county as well.
Okay.
I know that we have, we have a lot in the Mon Valley.
Yeah. This is--
Yeah.
Okay. I'll connect with you then in terms of, it sounds like--
Yeah.
--the stuff you've made is still a high priority.
I think you all have my email.
Yeah.
Send me a direct email.
Yeah. And then last, but not least, is, you didn't talk about the 2026 initiatives that are here on the first page. One is creation of the elder and care department person's abuse unit. And then the other one is pretrial detention of offenders with intellectual and cognitive impairment. Can you just talk very, very briefly about those two things?
Okay.
Give us a little bit of background.
The creation of the elder and care dependent person's abuse unit, that's something we're currently working on. So we're working and negotiating with parties in terms of getting, getting that set up. But we're trying to do with the care dependent adults and care dependent persons and elder persons, we're trying to set up a system like we have with, with the child abuse, child lines statute. These, there are two statutes here, the elder, elder abuse and the care dependent person's statutes, that we read as requiring us to be notified whenever a report of need is sent to Harrisburg. We have not been receiving those. We don't get those. It's all been within the confines of the other part of the system. And this initially happened, which is why we have the child line statute, that on the social services side, they get all the complaints and review them, and don't really realize all the times when something may be a crime. And so some things have come to our attention that brought it, brought things to a head, and so that is something we're currently working on. What we're looking to do is have this, we're not going to reinvent the wheel, we want to mirror the child lines protocols and set that up, and have, when a report goes to Harrisburg and they look at the zip code and say, oh, that's Allegheny County, and send it to Allegheny County, anything that could possibly be, a report that goes to them where there could possibly be criminal involvement, like with child lines, we want to also get that report. And then we, but we will need individuals to review those reports, and we're trying to do this, and we're trying, I'm giving away trade secrets here, but we're trying to get the funding from the state, for them to divert monies that are coming through, what they're doing right now. But if we're going to take on this responsibility, we'd like that to be diverted to us, and then not have to ask the county to fund this. But we would need individuals who have previously been in law enforcement, that's what we've done with our child line initial liaison, who reviews the reports, as somebody who was a police officer, probation officer, someone who understands the law and can say, this type of injury appears to be criminal. In the elder abuse area, we also have financial exploitation, and a lot of the reports we get are from banks, where suspicious withdrawals are coming, or they see larger than normal, so that, and we have, you know, so that the intake person would review this and say, yes, this appears to be a financial crime. They would take that, review it, say, yes, our office should, the district attorney's office should be involved in this. And then we would, we would determine by where it's occurring, which police department should handle it. If it's a small department that doesn't have the ability to handle financial crimes, say, then we would go to the county police or use our internal investigations unit. But we all, we try to work with the county police as much as possible, so, you know, we're not cutting, just cutting them out of the area. If it's a physical abuse crime, then we will work with the local municipality. But if it's a part-time municipality and they're like, I just don't have, we don't have the personnel for that, then we, here again, we will get the county police involved, and our investigators will work with them as well. That's, that's what we do with child, with the child abuse kinds. So that is the intent there. Once you, when you're dealing with the elder, older population, whether 18 and older or 60 and older is considered older adults or elder, then you have people who have more rights, because as a child, somebody has to make a decision for them. So there are more, there are different types of, there's more interaction between the agencies, because now you have to determine, does this person need a guardian? Are they competent? Because if it's just an issue of self-neglect, so, you know, I'm crazy Becky Spangler, I'm retired, and I decided I don't want to weed my garden anymore. And so if somebody sends in a complaint to the line, we think something's wrong with crazy Ms. Spangler, because she's got weeds two feet tall, and I just say, I don't want to, I don't want to weed my garden anymore. And if I'm not violating an ordinance, go away. Well, that's not criminal. So we, we're not talking about getting into those types of things. But this is the type of thing where there, there are, on the report of need forms, there are boxes to be checked by the person making the report. If a hospital's reporting, somebody's come in and they have deep bed sores, that should be looked at as possible neglect from a caregiver, caretaker, or, you know, bruises, what, you know, those types of things. So you have that, that, those are the types of things that we'd be looking to do. That would be how we would reorganize, because right now, and any allegations of sexual abuse or such of a care dependent, and the care dependent person's, someone 18 to 59 who has needs because of maybe intellectual disabilities or other types of things, that's why there are two statutes. But that, that's, I'm rambling, I know, but--
Maybe, maybe you guys should give a, give a call and go over some of that stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, I can get that to you.
Thank you for the explanation. That's helpful.
And the pretrial detention, that's where, the same thing with people who have intellectual disabilities. We've come, it's, we've come to find out that frequently, when people are at the jail and they're, and they've been given, and they're, they've been released to go to an alternative housing, as we have recently learned, there are, several of the alternative housing facilities won't take people who have other medical problems, because they don't want to be responsible for giving them medication. So that's another thing we're, we're trying to work within the system, how can we get that addressed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the phone that has any more questions? Suzanne or Paul?
I put them to sleep.
I don't know.
I have one.
You have one?
Yes.
And I can get a three-minute answer?
It's just one. It's a follow-up to Councilman Bottas' question. Okay.
So Councilman Bottas' question about the NICE software, I just kind of have a follow-up on that, because I read this wild article. It's actually intelligence software. The I in NICE actually stands for intelligence. It was software that was developed by IOF contractors in Israel, and so I kind of am just having a hard time believing that, like, that software and the use of it is the problem for the backlog. And, because it seems, while I have, like, moral obligations to it, it seems like a pretty complex, intricate software. Is the actual problem not like the municipal police departments being forced to provide the discovery material in a timely manner?
The NICE program, the NICE software is not the problem. The NICE software is, is a dream. We want that. It's, it's perfect for us. The problem is the volume, because when you, when we get it, we have, that's why we want-- Because when you, when we get it, we have, that's why we want a digital evidence coordinator, is yes, getting it from the municipalities, most of them are very good about it.
Like how, how soon before a prelim are you getting that?
We don't get any of it before the prelim. We don't get any of this stuff before the prelim.
That's your second, that's one and a half.
So, but what happens is, we have to get that information.
We have other people waiting.
But somebody has to go through it. And when you have 100 hours of video evidence and they have really slick tools to go through and, you know, before we had to go through and mark each instance of this item that needs to be redacted, we'd have to go through and find it. We can identify it and then the software will go through and redact it throughout the document. NICE is not the problem. It's the fact that we just have so much stuff now to put through NICE.
Could you get it earlier?
Becky, thank you very much for the presentation tonight.
We get it as soon as we can.
We have, that's it.
That was almost two questions, Bob. Thank you.
Some folks cannot stick to three questions. Thank you very much for the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. And email me about where you want the cameras.
We are waiting for PRT. Kathryn Kellerman, CEO, how are you? And your staff?
Good, go, we're good.
Sorry, some folks like to talk a lot.
Oh, my babe is here, what's up?
Hold on. Hey Boo. So I wanted to tell you that Dominica has been working on Instant Pot cooking, so perhaps our cooking club can expand.
I can't wait, I got the Stillers Instant Pot, I'm ready.
Let's go.
I'm ready. Oh, yeah.
Kathryn, how are you? Dominica, how are you guys doing?
Starting, our attrition rate is 3%, sub 3%.
There's your answer. So no more questions from you either.
A rather easy calculation, though.
I have no comment.
What was the number?
Less than 3%.
Wow.
Which is quite.
2.7.
Easy.
Well, it has something to do first off with the salaries that you guys have and the salaries that they make.
Oh, my gosh, their salaries are through the roof.
Who's salaries?
The last presenters.
Hey, wait a second.
Yeah, we, let's move on. I want to, I love to talk about buses and
Thank you, buses.
tees and, and investigators making double. That's union, that's something separate.
Coming back.
Anyways.
Kathryn, it's good to see you. Feel free to start.
Thank you very much.
The wise will be until about 9 o'clock tonight. Feel free to go and go.
No, but I, my boys have crossed over into Boy Scouts and tonight I have to take them to the Cub Scouts to be din chiefs. So, 6:30 in Mount Lebo.
Okay, one question tonight.
I'm going to see Hell's Kitchen at the Benedum at 7:30, so we will be out of here by 6:00.
Ken, can you cut Bethany's mic?
Oh, my gosh.
We also, um, and Councilwoman, we also cut back on the presentation. So when we came to see the county executive's budget briefing, it was super short and so we are going for that too. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting us join you. I am Kathryn Kellerman, CEO of Pittsburgh Regional Transit. My chair feels really short, so I'm going to try to fix that. I'm just going to break it. I'm joined, don't, it's going to break. We're just going to, I'm just going to stay short because it won't be very long. I'm joined with Dominica Brown, our CFO. So we'll just jump into it. You have with you a shorter presentation. I think everyone who's up here is familiar that under our funding laws through the state, through the Commonwealth, the county is required to pay a match to our operating and our capital budget. So much of our conversation today is to help you see what we're doing with that, answer any questions about going forward. So you have a slide in front of you, which is what has happened. So this year, first, thank you, everybody, for all the words of support coming from, hmm?
He was just grabbing, I was just making gestures.
Okay, sorry about that. We greatly appreciate all the support we received from everyone on county council, talking to our friends in Harrisburg about how important transportation is here in Allegheny County. We were not included with a special appropriation for transit, but the budget by the state is not done at this point. Like our friends in the southeast, we applied for a waiver, which we're legally able to do, to use a year of capital funding to cover our gaps in operating. This did not include funding that we use for, we're still servicing the debt for the North Shore Connector and critical safety and security projects. So this year, we are not seeing an increase in our operating budget per se. We're taking capital and we're using it for the next two years. The impact for the next five years is about a 15% reduction in our capital plan. We're still working on how these projects slot, what those implications are. Everything will stay safe, but things that might have started in the summer of 26 will move to 27. Things in 27 might move out to 28. Dominica can discuss more. We're also changing how we budget projects. Previously, we've budgeted everything the year of expenditure. So if this year we wanted to start a bridge reconstruction and it's 50 million, we would budget that all this year. We're moving to a cash flow where we would budget maybe half a million for design this year and 10 million and then 35 and further out. That helps us be more cash efficient now, but it creates a pinch point for us in about years 28 or 29 because instead of having our full budget to spend on new projects, we've already got money that's lined up in the bank. So it's good now, has a pinch point, spreads back out. So we've gotten creative with capital and I really want to stress, there is nothing from a safety or security position that we have moved out. Anything which was a critical need for a bridge has already been done. Anything that touches a bridge might be that we were going to look at in two years from now, now we're going to get to it 2.4 years. We know sinkholes. We know collapsing bridges. We know not to mess with infrastructure. So I just want to stress that it's all good for safety. The next slide we're looking at is our operating budget projection. Without new funding, we're okay for three years. In year four, we have a gap. In year five, we have another gap. Our conversations with the legislature are that, you know, hang loose in the next two years, no service reductions and no fare increases, which I think is a critical win for the county. Our fares are already very high. And then the intent is the legislature will be talking about a bigger solution in fiscal 27, two years from now. So gird your loins, we'll be back in two years. Keep going. We have our, just a chart on our operating revenue. Fares continue to be a chunk of our operating revenue. We have advertising and interest income. By far and away, the biggest sort of money for us comes in from fares. We can diversify income. We could sell naming rights. We can increase advertising. None of that replaces a chunk of revenue that we get back from passenger fares. And we have said this before, that everyone who rides is already a taxpayer. The less money you earn, the more money you pay out in taxes. So everyone who rides, the fares cover 14% of our budget. Everyone who rides has already paid that 86% as a taxpayer. That's how we approach service. You can see lovely pie charts, which I'm happy to walk through. I know we all love pie charts. But going through our operating revenues and subsidies, this year's budget is about $572 million. Last year was $540 million. The biggest shift for us is in pensions. Last year, our pension numbers were really low because we were norming out the pension bump from the 2008 financial crisis. Now we're back to full budget. So it's not that we got crazy expensive, it's just a bookkeeping thing. It went down for a year, now it's back to a more realistic number. We have our operating expenses laid out, they're happy to walk through them. Our biggest drivers remain wages, salaries, benefits and pension. Nearly a quarter of our budget goes to benefits and pension. But I would argue, you know, people should be able to get treatment for serious illnesses. Our benefits will cover someone to get a liver transplant and we will get them back to work. Will cover someone getting esophageal cancer and coming back to work. It's better for our county if we have these folks back at a job and fully employed than at home. This is economically the best thing we can do. We also do have a good pension program, but I will tell you, if you stand on a concrete slab for 25 years, you should be allowed to sit down. Don't go to Boca, keep your money here. Driving buses is also really hard on the body. Imagine 10 hours a day in a shaky chair on these streets. As science goes on, we see that your body changes how you produce, try to glyceride if you've been sitting down for half an hour. There's a lot of health impacts. Folks have earned these pensions and we're proud to keep those pensions here in Allegheny County. This is money going to your granddaughter's cheer team. This is money going to, you know, another pizza joint. So it still keeps our money here local. Again, the next pie charts is showing us breaking down our expenses and over quarters benefits on employees and pensions we have in there and wages and salaries, but we are a very human capital intensive budget. How's the speed? You like the speed? Are we good?
Perfect, I like it.
Happy, happy with the change? Also, we have a slide for amended capital revenue. Again, we are taking capital revenue out this year and moving into projects and moving into operating. So in three big buckets, we've gone back through grants all the way back to 2015 and found the smaller dollar amounts, pulling that together like the one big pancake at the end of the drops of the pancake. Instead of putting this to other projects, we're using that to fill our gap. We are deferring some projects, so we're not buying new articulated buses this year. Our, our need for the fleet has shrunk. We're just not going to replace those buses. We're not keeping the, the older buses longer financially, it's a lot to get into. But we have three different buckets, so moving projects, discontinuing projects and not spending extra cash. It comes up to a total of $106 million from our capital.
From the state.
From the state side. And then the next slide shows we are still spending $57 million on capital this year. That's $18 million in debt servicing. We refinanced our bonds in 2020 to 0.85%. Better to be lucky than good, but I'll take luck all day. And that saves us an average of $3 million a year. There is a certain amount of revenue replacements we have to do, fixed guidewake work that has to be done, and critically, the safety and security projects. So the capital update, just, I gave you all of that, but here's a slide that summarizes it. Historical capital pressure, we are old. So here's pictures of, so that's a plinth. This is a concrete that the rail is bolted into in our train system. If you go out on the library line, you will see that we have concrete to hold the ties, but they actually are seated underneath and ballast with weird shaped rocks. That's because the vibration from the rail actually goes down, packs the rocks together, but it absorbs the vibration. In the train tunnels, we can't do this. It's all the concrete. We have to get out and replace the wear and tear a little faster and we're just old. I mean, our train's grown, Councilman Mousy. We use the same switches on our library line as we use at the Pennsylvania Trolley Museum, so it's safe, but it's pretty vintage. So Too Long Didn't Read, this year we will be asking you to match to capital, originally capital rather than operating, so we're actually asking you for less money. Don't get used to it, we're going to come back and shake you down later. And we're happy to answer any questions about attrition rate, not bail. So was that good? Are you happy with this?
That was fantastic.
We're doing this every year, okay.
So I have two things to say. Do you still stay in touch with the folks we lost during the COVID? I ask you that every
Oh, absolutely, we do. So I went, um, thank you for that, you're so considerate. I went to a rail picnic last summer. Of course, it opened up and rained like crazy and ran into the father of one of our first guys who, who we had lost. And dad got COVID a couple of months after he lost his son. And it was a really good conversation, talking about how, the way that the authority had responded. And 98% of this is the workers, I mean, administration. We, I think we mentioned before that we covered all the healthcare bills, again, good benefits, but when you're grieving the loss of your, your family member to get a bill for a test, I mean, I can't think of, it's pretty inhumane. There's things which are worse. So we had covered those bills, we made sure that we have stayed in touch and it is a very close knit family. So he was, was very appreciative of the folks who've asked after them. We also still have folks who were so ill from COVID, they won't come back, but we do stay in touch. Thank you.
I appreciate that you do that every year. The other question I have, as you said, 30 million more on the pension plan, is that because there is more retirees or?
Oh, no, it norms it out, so you're going to answer better than, she's money.
Yeah, so there's a provision in our pension plan that allows for huge market losses to be smoothed out. So I believe that the loss that we had a break from was the 2008 crisis and there were increases that we had to pay to catch up for the loss in value in our pension plan due to that drop in the market. So what that provision allows us to do is spread out those payments so that we're not hit immediately with a large liability to feel on the plan. So once those were satisfied, we had a, one reprieve, which was last year where there was a lower amount that we were required to contribute to our pensions. But due to other market changes and things of that nature, you know, we, that's back up again this year.
Does that happen every year or is that just?
Bob, three questions.
I'm not even talking to you. I'm not looking her way.
No, it really just depends on the market.
Okay. I understood. Matter of fact, I'm not even going that way. I'm going to go this way.
Ah, good man.
Councilwoman Nakaray Chakas, and make sure you lay low with your questions too because you were a little long last time.
The question was short.
Yeah.
But answer. So one, one question. You had mentioned that the need for your fleet has shrunk.
Ah, yes.
Can you just explain that a little bit?
Would love to. So pre-pandemic, we have, well, so we still have about 700 buses. Pre-pandemic, we ran about 600 and change in rush hour. We're down closer to 470. Now, why is that? People do not commute in like they used to. So pre-pandemic, half the folks who came into downtown Pittsburgh every day came in on transit. We still bring in a lot of folks, but there's, there's less demand for the job based transportation. So we don't need that footprint in rush hour like we did previously. So previously, our demand looked like the Motorola logo, if you remember that, like pointy, pointy. And now it looks like that, that picture of an elephant under a blanket, so it's sort of like this. So we don't have this hyper need in rush hours, but we've seen a big expansion early morning, a lot of late night weekend and in the middle of the day. So folks have moved where their trips are. It's been some subsequent conversation we're happy to have about data. It's really, really cool, all the information we have. So we do not need as many buses to cover what's out there. This is also what's driving our bus line redesign, which I'm really excited about the next phase coming out because folks don't travel like they used to, not just since 2019. We haven't touched our routes for 60 years. And when we look at a county where all of our growth is coming from people moving into the county and they're coming from places where they don't drive, we need to put our resources, which are useful for the residents we have and the residents we're going to get. So that's a project there. So it's just, it's, it's truing up the fleet. It is a better idea for us rather than to just not replace the buses. And so we're retiring out, we keep buses for 12 years. We rebuild the engines and transmissions every six years because that's about halfway through the life. It's very expensive, but they're internal combustion engines. If we keep a bus past 12 years, we have to rebuild it again and then the maintenance costs go through the roof. So it's better for us just to say, thank you for your service. They get retired off, they go off to an auction, I don't know where they go, but there's a certain amount of money that comes back to us. But we are shrinking the fleet down. At some point in the future, we'll need to expand, but we need to be able to take care of our bread and butter first. So we'll expand once we know that we can meet every trip when we said we would and we can get you home. And we're getting there.
Anymore? Councilman, a few toes.
I'm good, I don't want to speed the process up. I'm good.
Councilman Grisbeck.
So you mentioned the transfer of the Public Transit Trust Fund, right? And the temporary use of capital expenditures for operating costs. I know there's probably a bit of a sense of relief at the legislative level after that, not necessarily at your level, right? I understand that you know that it's, it's not a permanent solution, right? It's a temporary solution to a permanent problem. Is, have talks been ongoing at the Commonwealth level? Have they been productive?
So I do want to clarify, for us, for us, this isn't a transfer. For us, this is money that the state says, here, take for capital.
Right.
And we said, let me put it in a different bank account. There have been conversations about what could you use that trust fund for, so it's very relevant. There have been conversations, but since the state still doesn't have a budget put together, the focus from the, the people we would normally talk to has been very much on, let's get this budget put together. So for instance, we would usually have been up in Harrisburg this, this month, but they are, this is taking up their capacity. But we are working with various staffers. For instance, Senator Marty Flynn's chief of staff is coming to visit to talk about P3 partnerships and we'll be engaging with him about if we are going to do them, here's some of our constraints, here's how they can be successful. We just hosted a tour last month for chairs Nielsen and Benninghoff from the House and then again for Justin from Senator Flynn's office, so they could come through and see what we do, the parts we machine at Manchester, it's really cool. So the conversations are ongoing. We anticipate once a budget is passed that we'll be able to have another visit. We will be up there a lot next year, not like this year, but laying the groundwork and engaging with our friends in the PPTA, our Pennsylvania Public Transit Association. So when it comes back to the next year, that we'll be we'll be back at it.
Okay, so the transfer was from your capital account, not from the Public Transit Trust Fund capital account? Okay, my misunderstanding.
Right, right. So we took our Christmas budget to pay for Thanksgiving.
Understood.
Or our capital funds, they do come from the PTTF. However, they were our the usual capital funds that we would have received for 2026. Those are the dollars that we're using for 2027.
Understood. Okay, thank you very much.
Operating for 2026.
I appreciate the clarification. That's helpful.
Councilman Maisy.
Thank you, Chairman. Catherine, it's nice to see you again. We don't hang out in the same areas that that often. But I want to thank you for putting the Transportation Center in McKey Sport. I think it works well. Of course, there's the other area over in Duquesne. I don't know what the ridership is, but, you know, we had problems in the past with getting buses there in the first place. And I don't know how far it's extended, but I think I don't. I don't hear any complaints. I am also, I think I understood what was explained by both you as far as the legacy costs were concerned. They've pretty much leveled off. I do know that in the one negotiation, I don't know how many years ago, the drivers, the employees had to take a cut because it was just a lot of money that was being paid out to the retirees, and you didn't have it, you know. I also want to thank you for rebranding Port Authority through the PRT. I think it was a good move, and I think if people understood marketing, they would understand that that's something that's done across this country, across corporations, whether it's rebranding, repackaging. Marvelous job. Thank you so much.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Paul Messina, 30 seconds real short. I had a question about this from an employee yesterday. Part of what we did with that branding conversation was what we should be doing every five to 10 years, which is essentially a market survey. So what do our customers think, not just in a quick way, but deep in? What do they value? What do they want to see? What do our neighbors want to see? What do our stakeholders want to see? And we should be using that information to chart how we go forward. And what was really great for us was our folks didn't care about Uber and Lyft or automated vehicles. They wanted clean, courteous, reliable, and respectful. They wanted a nice driver. They wanted to know if their seat had been used. They wanted to be able to pay for their fares really easily, so it was, again, focused on the bread and butter. So we did that. At the same time, we would have done a survey of all of our signage, and I think every one of you has a park and ride sign in your district that probably you can't read anymore. You've seen the bus stop signs that are just really, they're not very useful. So we should have done an inventory of all of our stuff and how to make it easier to use. Putting those together as part of the rebranding is bucketed in all the work we should have been doing. So yes, it gave us our pretty swooshes or nice circles, but it let us capture a lot of stuff that's getting much better signs out there and getting a getting a good reminder that, you know, folks don't necessarily need a conga line bus. They just want a bus that's frequent enough. They don't have to worry about it, and it runs when they want it, and that they don't have to worry about. So that's. But thank you very much. It's a very kind statement.
Well, I also understand there's a lot of angst going through reconstruction and change, but change is, that's the only thing that's consistent. But the main line, I think, is a great idea, and I think it's going to work out.
Great.
People need a little bit of time. That's all.
They do. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Councilman Boyler.
Thank you, Chairman Paul Messina, and thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. So I just have a couple of questions. So keep it short. So I appreciate that we are now moving from capital to operating and that we have the go ahead for that. My question is, in terms of the bus rerouting, are there going to be any reroutes? Was that part of the capital plan or?
So there will not. We are. We are specifically directed from PennDOT not to cut our service levels. We can change things to improve them, but we cannot change those, which is great. Separate from that, we are still in this process of what we call bus line redesign. We did. We just had an update on this last year, that last year's outreach was 97 meetings, 12,000 comments, super duper expansive. We started off planning 35 meetings, ended up with 97, which our staff covered because the consultant helping us was not in their contract. So you will see us coming out in the spring, late winter, early spring next year, coming back and saying, hey, did we hear you? Because we brought out some stuff in bus line redesign that folks just did not like. And it doesn't matter if it's good on paper. If you don't like it, you're not going to use it. It's like, I can't tell my kids broccoli is good, and I hope our service is better than broccoli to a teenager, right? But I'm really excited, having seen what's being pitched, the what we will bring back out to folks is really responsive to the information we heard. We heard a lot in Harrisburg, what are you doing for, like, what are you doing to be relevant now? What are you doing for in a post-COVID world where folks don't commute, but more people are going in the evening, so on and so forth? So our funding is still up in the air. We don't know what it's going to look like, but the county deserves better than us tucking and rolling. The county deserves to see improvements delivered on their service. So we will be coming back out and saying, hey, did we hear you? Does this route make sense for you?
Perfect. Thanks. And then how do you prioritize those, that feedback from constituents?
Wow. Okay, so you told me to be brief. We're really good at it. I'm just joking. We get it. So when we get when we get feedback in, we break it down like, you know, that when people say, we love you, we like to get that. That's one bucket. Other stuff goes into what we would call like constructive criticism. We'll break it down broadly, and we'll see how many folks we got. We also look at the comment itself. If we get 200 of the exact same comment, it's probably a petition. But if we get four or five of the same concept, but the words are different, then we're going to see that as, you know. So we evaluated a little bit there. We look for overarching themes. And on the bus line redesign, for instance, there was a certain amount of please don't change. But part of it was, hey, you took this connection away, and I'd like it back. Part of it was, this is too confusing. I don't have. And they weren't complaints. It was, I use a phone to plan my trip. Can't you build a tool where I can log on and see the same type of stuff? So we put it into like, what are the broad categories that arise, and then how do you go ahead and tackle that? So it's a little bit like also, it's like part of this hair on fire, part of this, you know, is it just a reaction to change? We did so much work that we had a really good sense of what was coming in, so through the process, we could kind of refine what we were taking out. So people said, oh, my God, you did X, Y, Z to me in early on. If we knew we wanted to bring it back, we could present and say, hey, the draft says X, but we've been hearing from you that people don't like this. Please let us know, but we've heard you were rolling that in. I don't know if that's a good answer, but it's, you know, start putting it into buckets and then go from there.
Okay, and I would anticipate that you use, you know, probably artificial intelligence at this point.
No.
No, not at all?
Okay, so listen, I'm old school. I'm old, but AI still can't tell me how many letters are in your name.
Right.
I'm not going to.
Sorting through very complex data is something that it excels at very well.
Separate from that, yeah. I mean, we have, oh, gosh, like, we've gone from SPSS to all these tools. Now, I like AI can be super helpful for like really technical descriptions to a maintenance person. So if they're going through an automated list, it can be like, hey, go pull the, don't ask me.
Yeah, TLDR.
Right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. It can be like, get your puce skirt instead of avocado. Like, it can. So it's essentially filling in the text for you, but we still are not at the point we're using it aggressively for data. We'll get there someday, but I mean, we're a public entity. We're slow.
Yeah.
But and Kattily can tell me that there's, you know, the right number of letters in your name. I'm probably going to.
Sure, and I would be remiss if I didn't bring this up. I've heard from many constituents in Polish Hill particularly that the bus routes up there should be maintained as they are, and so.
We heard that from a lot of folks, so we'll make sure. So I'm saying Kurt, Polish Hill, we love Polish Hill. He says yes. He's behind us.
Kurt.
Yeah, but we did hear that a lot, too, and so it's. Thank you.
Sure, sure. I have another question, but in the interest of brevity, I'll save it and talk to you afterwards.
It better be afterwards right now because I got scouts coming.
Yeah, she has.
I'll send you. I'll send you an email.
Mine will be so quick, you might have time for it. Okay? Am I recognized, Chairman Paul Messina? I really appreciate you, sir. Thank you. First question. Hello, thank you, as always. Yens are dope. I love your whole team. I'm so grateful. It's like a breath of fresh air when you come and give this presentation with Kurt as the alley-oop in the back. So thank you both. First of all, first question. Okay. How can we, as council members and council as a whole, support you getting adequate funding from the state?
Help our business partners have a good voice in Harrisburg. Like, because when I go, I mean, I love trains. I'm kind of a dork. But we don't ask Harrisburg to fund us because trains are cool. We ask Harrisburg to fund us first because that's our tax dollars coming home, and second, we're an economic engine. We get people where they need to go to live their lives because it's an economic engine. It's not Christian charity. Or, I mean, I'd make a Zora Mondami joke, but too soon. Like, it's not charity. We do this, right, because it's an economic engine. Every dollar that comes into us is $4 more to Allegheny County. The revamped bus line redesign should improve access to like another, like it should increase access to something like 30,000, 40,000 jobs. The economy doesn't work if we're not here. It doesn't. So encourage your big business partners to make sure that's not like Giant. You know what was really great this year? Eaton Park, Brooks and Eaton Park.
The place for smiles.
Well, I'm just saying, but but the restaurants are such a small part of their business. It's primarily catering. 20% of their staff takes transit to get to work. So then these sandwiches go to places where people are taking transit. Giant Eagle, it's 20%. And then Giant Eagle, it's a really big percentage there, folks with disabilities. They wouldn't have jobs without us. They wouldn't be independent. They wouldn't get to VOTEC. So realistically, encourage our big employers to tell folks in Harrisburg. That, I think, is our big, big thing.
Perfect. That was one. Okay, when is tap-to-pay with your credit card coming?
Next year.
Like, early, late, middle?
Listen, I'm giving you a year.
Okay, next year. In 2026, we will have credit card tap-to-pay.
I think we're thinking, ee, summer-ish, but that's a fair refresh. So it will be credit cards, but it'll be also your iPhone, Apple Watch, and then account based, too. So if you lose your connect card, you don't just lose your money. You can find it. It's going to be so much better.
I know. I can't wait. Last one, since you said you were a big fan of constructive criticism. I hate the bus wraps so much. It is a very small portion of your revenue, I noticed, in your pie chart, getting advertising.
And get them off the windows.
And yeah, so when I've noticed that you've started to like keep the windows open, which obviously I don't care at all if that's what you're going to do on all of them. I don't mind the decoration.
That's where we're working.
I would love my face on the back of one, you know.
But with eye holes for windows.
Yeah, it's the windows. It has to be the whole windows have to be open. I mean, they're ugly. They are. It's like almost nauseating to ride on a bus.
We are in the process of that, absolutely. Denver RTD, my friend Deborah Johnson.
The question is, can we get rid of them?
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying we're doing that. We're doing that.
Okay, that's a question. That's an answer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
He got a fourth.
Thank you. Sorry, I was just wondering, you know, because a significant amount of the budget comes from governmental sources, you know, from the state and then a little bit from us. Is there any interest in the near future of increasing public-private partnerships for funding for PRT?
Yes. The likelihood that we will find a public-private partnership that covers enough of our operating budget for us not to be on government money is very slim. So when we look at our partners, at least in the U.S., it is not. It is not huge, but there, I want to say, oh, gosh, we have a we have a thing coming up in the near future. We can talk to your office about it. But a public-private partnership, for us, what's most likely to be successful would be rebuilding the Pennsylvanian and turning it to a downtown hub. And so then you get this great thing downtown, and we can use it, too. We we target the funding. It's it's not the easiest way. It's just not. We are more like parks and libraries. We're public goods.
Right, not the whole budget, but maybe not to be able to, you know, have to have to rely so much on federal funding.
Got it.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody on the phone, Ken? Anybody on the phone want to ask any questions?
Is there anything you want to add?
No.
Did we do okay?
Catherine, Dominica, it's always great to see you. You always come well prepared. You guys do a great job.
Did you like it being super short? You want to stick with this?
What's that?
You like you like this instead of my.
I did like it a lot because you know what? You talk fast, and that gives us more time to ask questions. And we know you have. And we know you have somewhere to go, so go ahead and go, and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us.
Always good to see you.